Either exclude other entities or exclude certain licensed business liquor license holders within the city. And you may see in the news, there's communities that are discussing that. There is no authority under the Gaming Act that would allow the city to do that. The Stat-- the Act is fairly clear. It identifies what constitutes a licensed establishment, and it sets forth those four categories or classifications. And it does not allow a non-home rule, and I don't believe it allows a home rule community, to regulate that beyond that which is set forth in the-- in the city code, or in the state statute. So, city code cannot be more restrictive in that regard. So, if you do see, you know, entities that are doing it, I think it's ripe for challenge, and I think it would be a successful challenge because there simply is no legal authority to differentiate between a fraternal organization, a veterans' organization, a truck stop, and other licensed facilities for the sale of alcohol. So, you simply don't have the legal authority to make that distinction when issuing these or allowing these in those establishments.
Thank you. Well, have you got-- okay?
Could I just make one comment before a vote is called? Just the fact that, in addition to repealing, maybe the city attorney has more, but there's two other sections of ordinance that would have to be amended according to the-- go ahead.
Yeah, you've got to repeal ordinance 09-35, which currently expressly prohibits video gaming. You also would have to amend section 4.307 of the city code and 14.520 to specifically allow for video gaming. So, if this motion is successful, the direction would be then to go forward at the council meeting with the repealing of 09-35 and the amendment of section four and 14. So, there's-- it's a two-step process to be able to do that. But the motion-- the motion is if you want to allow it or not. If you do, those are the two procedural steps that need to be done to accomplish that.
I would like to make a motion. All right? Art?
Just a comment. One, we put these rules and ordinances in effect for a reason, so we shouldn't take lightly changing them. B, when we're viewing this, we're looking at it, and I would love to see Joe's business make more money, too. But from an economic standpoint, I don't see how somebody magically has more money. We can make the argument that the people are going to come from Itasca, Bensonville, and Addison, but you're telling me they're all going to do the same thing. So, that kind of negates that argument. And the businesses that we're looking at today might not necessarily be the businesses we look at tomorrow. You know, some of those business owners sell those businesses, sell off their business licenses and liquor licenses. So, we have to not only look at the people here, but the future business owners. Thank you.
Well, it's a tough decision. Eugene?
My question, Mr. Pat Bond, they can't just turn over your liquor license if a new owner comes in and take over that business. They have to apply for a new liquor license. Am I right? They can't sell over the business license.
No, business licenses. The liquor license is non-transferable.
Right. So, they would have to come back to us, and it's our choice to give them the liquor license or not.
There'll be a license available unless, in the interim between the time that person surrenders a license and a new applicant comes in. If the council reduces the number of that classification of liquor license, otherwise, if it's available and they otherwise qualify, then it's up to the mayor, but he has very little latitude in his capacity as a local liquor commissioner to actually issue a license if it is in fact available.
So, I think what we also should-- I mean, if that's the case, then, in a way, he's right, and in a way, he's might not be right. My concern is then, if that's the case, whoever surrendered their liquor license with that business, and I would hope that the mayor does this and pull the liquor license back until we see who that business is and just don't obligate just because that business license is available. I mean, in a way, this is right, in a way, it's wrong.
Mayor?
Just as a clarification, I want to make sure I understand this. Let's say I own bar ABC, and I sell it to the chief over there. We close the deal, there's an open liquor license. As long as he passes background checks, he gets the license, right? And I never have to-- as a business owner, I don't have to come to the city and tell you I'm selling my business. I sold it. I sold it to a person C, and then they actually have to apply, have to do all the background checks. But as far as the city's concerned, the license is there, he gets it. Is that correct, Pat?
That's correct. They have to comply with our liquor license provisions, and that includes an application, a background check, there's certain training that has to be done, verification that there's going to be a manager on site and so forth. But that's not a city council action. That becomes a staff analysis to determine whether or not they're eligible, and then the license is issued by the mayor in his capacity as a liquor commissioner.
Alderman Wesley just whispered, "We could reduce the license." No, we can't. The business is sold, the license is open. We can't shut that license down because the guy bought-- as long as he passes those background checks, he's good to go, right?
Right. For the most part, yeah.
Anybody else got any questions? Ms. Winger?
I believe we're-- well, understanding this is worthwhile. I believe that we're digging too deep into how is this going to happen when I have my chief of police right here telling me that they understand how to handle this situation of bringing in video gaming. I have a city administration saying we understand what we're going to do. So, I have to leave that to them to handle that part of it, and I think it comes down to, do we believe video gaming is morally okay? Is it okay to bring it into Wood Dale? I personally am okay with it, and I think it-- if the businesses that can have it want it, I don't see why they can't have it. And I believe our staff knows how to handle it. So, that's why I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
All right. Now, I have to make a motion. No? Go ahead.
You've got a motion on the floor. The motion is to rescind the ban video gaming that was established in 2009.
Yes. Number nine thirty-five, right? That was nine thirty-five. Nine dash thirty-five. I have a second?
I already said.
All right. Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley? Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Stain.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
It passes. Now, I have to make another?
No, which you'll have then, just so you know, going to the council, you'll have two. There'll be an ordinance repealing ordinance 0-09-35. You'll also have an ordinance amending section 4.307, and you'll have an ordinance amending section 14.520 to permit video gaming. So, those will be the three actions that will be placed on the council agenda for your act-- for your action.
I-- you want me to talk about the 9/11, or you want to talk about it? The addition-- the addition of--
Yeah, I could make mention of that. Based on an informational memo that you had in your packet, I understand there's some interest in discussing future major emergencies and how dispatching is going to be handled if certain conditions fall into place. Now, I guess I'll kind of leave it at that, but you're aware of the issues that there's been recently, and from my understanding, there to be a discussion at a future committee meeting as far as what steps can be taken if that same situation happens again.
Okay. Thank you. You want to-- okay, go ahead.
Greg, for the residents in Wood Dale, could you give a-- because, of course, they don't get the memo. Could you give an update on that, on your report?
Yeah, confidential memo was provided to the council, so-- because there were some items that are in there that are sensitive.
So, you can't say nothing?
Are you saying I can't give a-- I can't say to the residents what happened?
Can't say anything about it.
It's ridiculous.
I'm going to-- I make a motion to adjourn.
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Who's taking over finance?
Like to call finance committee meeting to order. Let the record show that everyone's present is last meeting. Need approved-- a motion approved a minute, it's April twelfth, 2012. Make that an informal motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
There's only one aye.
Didn't everyone-- everyone said aye, right? Okay. Joe says he only hears one this way. Okay. Brad, are you taking Microsoft Office upgrade?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. To the extent that I can, I will take the first two.
Okay. Go ahead.
The first one, Microsoft Office, we recall during the budget that you approved replacing the computers within the city. Critical component to actually allowing us to do our work on those computers is Microsoft Office. Currently, most people in the city, and I say most, I mean all but three, are running Office 2003, which, just by sheer math, has been in place for over nine years. So, we're looking to upgrade to the latest version, which is Office 2010 through CDWG. They do have the state contract on this, state bid, and it is a three-year engagement. The good news is that if anything new comes out, like they just prepped Office 15 today, they just put some notes out on that, anything new that comes out in the office world, we would get those upgrades automatically. After the three years, we would get the updates, but not any of the upgrades. And by upgrades, I mean a brand-new, complete version, Office 2000 XP 03, and now Office 10. So, there's not really a whole lot else to say about it. I mean, CDWG has the state bid, and effectively, if we don't have Office, then the computers are rendered useless. So, we just need a motion to move forward with the acquisition of Microsoft Office 2010. Not 12, there's not a 12, we do apologize. So, Office 2010.
At a cost of $33,551 over a three-year period.
Correct.
Okay. Make that an informal motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Wesley?
My question to us at this level here, last year or the year before, did we not come out here and ask for software update before for our computers? And I said, and I think my statement was, how many times are we going to update on software that is not comparable with the whole entire city? I thought two years ago, we sat here and we did software, and why do we not-- why do we not do it all at once?
Go ahead, Brad. Care of software.
Sure. Well, the conversation that we had about software, as I recall back then, was between Springbrook and perhaps NHR Green Software or Baxter Morgan Software. This is a completely different animal from that stuff. You are correct, but completely different animal.
Might I do a follow-up? Sure, as soon as I add into this. Operating programs versus Microsoft is totally different.
Yes.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So, my question to you tonight, so-- and I got my answer, pretty much. My question to you, are we down the line updating the software like Springbrook and that eventually? Is that coming down the line with this? Or do they, this company, offer something like that that might save us in the long run? Or not? I'm not a computer-- Brad, God.
Wouldn't there be a question for Nick? Since he's-- or do you install that?
Well, I can answer. We'll probably need him on the next question, anyway. But the Springbrook and everything else conversation is one that we're going to want to have. I actually spent a considerable amount of time on the phone today with Alderman Woods regarding that topic. So, the short answer is, yes, that is a conversation we're going to have. But again, they're two separate conversations, so.
Any other questions? Joe, you got a question?
I've got. Brad, we know that software goes-- changes quick. Every six months or so, something else comes up. Now, you got-- you got-- we have these here, and these now, right now, are getting obsolete because they come out with a smaller one. So, we're-- that's how things change in software. Every six months, something changes in software. So, you can't keep up. I don't care what anybody says. You can-- you can-- two years from now, two years ago, the software was different than the software is today. Now, two years from now, in the future, two years in the future, it'll be different than it is today. So, I mean, you can't-- you can't figure. Software changes too quick. You buy-- you buy a new car, and you got a new car. When you get a new car, all the software is different than your old one. And so, you can't-- you can't go by that. Nowadays, you could press a button, and you could talk to somebody on the telephone through your-- through your radio, where years ago, you had to have a telephone. So, I mean, this is the way things have changed. So, when you start talking software, you've got-- got to realize that the change is every six months. So, that's what-- all I wanted to say.
Help you out? Thanks. Mr. Mayor?
Actually, I spoke to Mr. Case earlier about upgrading our website. Is any of this stuff going to help? He said, "No, it'll be something else that'll be coming forward." He's talking about next budget season, unless, of course, members of the council want to bring it up this year and make an amendment. Is that correct?
Brad, this comes out of IT budget?
Correct.
Have we ever done a study of how much a town art size spends on IT?
The short answer, I'll say, is no, not that I'm aware of, not since I've been here. The one thing I would say, though, and just by way of information, talking to Mr. Case, our previous company, whatever, you know, a lot of the stuff, especially the next item on the agenda, is stuff that's been here for a number of years. I think, I don't know how old some of the items on the next one are, but, you know, I mean, the software, the office we're using is nine years old, some of the switches, you know. So, it may be slightly skewed currently because we're trying to, I hate to say, catch up, but we're trying to modernize as we're going along. So, but I do-- I do see where you're coming from, yeah.
I understand, but we should-- we should have a-- I know we're behind on our updates of Microsoft and programming and stuff like that, but we should find out how much another town is charging comparable to our size, so.
Yeah, we can-- we could look into that and get back to you. I don't know if that's something we could do specifically internally, just pulling other communities' budget books and just looking at that one-line item, or it might be more involved than that, but.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh.
In response to Alderman Wesley's, I think that that's exactly what we do, is pull other cities or municipalities their budget. Typically, the same as in business, it's a percentage. That should give us a fair assessment of what the other municipalities are paying, so we don't exhaust too much time.
I have a motion, I have a second upgrade, right? Correct? Oh.
Aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? That's done. Fiber optics. Brad?
Correct. Yeah, this one, I'll give a brief overview, then I'm going to-- I have to admit, my knowledge is slightly lacking on this topic. Recently, the city had Comcast out and installed fiber optics going into City Hall through our D mark room.
Hang on. Mr. Attorney, you're saying I didn't have a second on that.
You need a motion. You had a motion already on the Microsoft Office. You need a motion on the fiber optic and network switch upgrade.
He's talking about it now.
You need a motion to get to the discussion.
Okay. Motion to put the fiber optic on table. Not that you both are talking about it. Second. Okay. Don't start over, but continue. Go ahead, Brad.
Thank you. So, the fiber came into the D mark room. We then had a company out and ran it through the rest of the building. The problem that we're running into now is the fiber is significantly faster than the rest of the IT infrastructure can handle. Do I need to stop again? Okay. Thank you. The fiber is significantly--
Mr. Bond, do you want us to stop again?
No, I just-- it was-- there was a request for a call for a vote. I guess they have all the information they need.
Who wants to call a question? Who called a question?
I'll call a question.
Okay. I guess we don't need the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. You want to oppose? Okay. Let's talk about landscape. Miss-- who's? Okay, Mr. Kramer. Let's have some fun. I take it Mr. Kramer's going to take this, right, Brad?
That would be my strong presumption.
I need a-- you want a motion? Motion-- I'm not making a motion. Motion--
I'll make a motion to add a full-time employee as a specialty landscaper for the city of Wood Dale.
Okay, got a motion? Need a second?
Second.
Joe, second it?
Yes.
Okay, discussion.
By way of getting through the discussion, there was a brief one-line mention in there. If the option that the motion is for was made or the outside firm was made, neither item was included in this year's budget. So, to add it to this year's budget, we would also need to do a budget amendment, or depending on the timing, if we just wanted to roll it into next year's budget, then we would just address it at that time. So, depending on which option is gone with, we would either need a budget amendment or consensus to put it in next year's budget.
Well--
But first, you have to decide whether or not you want to go that route, but then that would be get another conversation.
First, I want to know how-- I talked to the chairman about this earlier, and I asked him if he put this on, and he doesn't remember any discussion about this, so I don't even know how it got on here. So, we're talking about streetscape in a minute. Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff was asked to bring back the landscaping position that was discussed during the budget presentation back up to committee to discuss options for specifically downtown, high-profile landscape sites in and around the downtown area, and speak a little bit about some options that we had. So, that's why you have in the memo that I wrote both the expanded level budget item and then going even back further, we have the discussion of a contractual service, or the third option is to basically do the exact same as what we're doing right now, which is have the existing street division staff maintain those areas. So, again, staff was asked to bring the landscaping position back up, and three options that we included are the additional landscaper, contractual service, and no action, or basically continue the existing service that we're doing now.
Joe?
That was taken out of the budget when we-- I think they were taking out of the budget when we were going over the budget. Am I right?
Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
It was never put in the budget. It was listed as a expanded budget level item. It did not make it past city manager's approval, and thusly, it was not talked about by city council during the budget presentation.
So, since it wasn't-- since it wasn't discussed at the-- I think passed the city manager, and there's some extra, I can make a motion to table this, right, Mr. Bond?
You can.
Make that an informal motion to table. You got a second? Nope. Got a second? I guess we continue with our discussion.
No. I'll second.
Oh, you got a second? You got to work, all right. Roll call to table?
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Shaki?
He's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
What's the total, please? The table. Okay, we're done. Okay. Table? No, I'd like the table to-- the next budget. To-- what's the budget?
We're going to be having internal staff discussions in December.
Okay. Table to December. Any future-- I want to bring up about some things here for a future meeting. We have one, two, three, four, five, two, three, six accounts for petty cash, total You know, I think there's a lot of money to have out there just for petty cash, especially when I get a petty cash receipt that was purchased and we pay tax on a product, and I don't think this is right. I'm not going to go a lot into it because we shouldn't be paying tax, and we have a bill here that we pay tax on, and we approved it, which is wrong. I like to-- we have 500 administration, 200 in community development, 400 in finance, 200 in finance, 750 in police, and city service, another 500. Why do we need this much money there? Do I have the right to, as vice chair, to cut this in half tonight?
You do not. You do have the ability to place it on an agenda at a future meeting for discussion.
Okay. I'd like to bring that up at the next-- I'd like to bring that up at the next committee meeting. Alderman Woods?
Thank you. Um, one, I think that that's been addressed already internally, and two, if we had the landscaper, never would've happened. Thank you.
Alderman Woods, I could sit here and argue with that all day long, but I'm not gonna go there, because it came out of your committee, I think so, at a streetscape, and vice chair of this, of finance, well, I'm paying tax, and of course, we have another bill coming to us, which wasn't even approved by, by, by a streetscape or anything, unless you wanna show me the minutes from, from your streetscape meeting.
Thanks for clarifying it wasn't okayed by my committee.
It was.
Thanks for clarifying it wasn't okay.
Thank you. Anything else for future meetings? Brad?
I know, uh, looking at the minutes from the last meeting, uh, the treasurer conversation was tabled, um, and I know that Alderman Winger wanted us to bring it back up with some additional information. Um, it has come to my attention that our current treasurer has put her sa- home up for sale and is intending on moving. Um, and I, I'm not specifically sure on the rules, I defer to Mr. Bond on this one. Um, if she were to move, I would led to believe she would not be able to be the city's treasurer. Um, so I guess the conversation then would be, you know, do you wanna put on the next ballot, then how would that work? If it would remain vacant, if it's before the two-year point, if it's after the two-year point, um, so the conversation was gonna come up anyways, but she has decided to, to move, um, and so that adds a little twist to the conversation.
Go ahead, you're doing pretty good tonight.
The, uh, the statute provides that if, uh, in order to be eligible to hold office, any office, including that of city treasurer, you have to be a resident of the city of Wooddale. If she loses that residency, uh, she's no longer eligible. That would render the position vacant. If the position's vacant, and there's, uh, depend on when she sells her house, there's more than twenty-eight months remaining in her term. That would go then on the next election, which would be the, uh, the, uh, spring election in 2013. Uh, if she sells it after that twenty-eight month period, it's a vacancy that's filled by the city council. Uh, you, as a city council, can elect not to fill that position if you so desire. There's no mandate that that be, uh, filled. The duties that are performed by, statutorily performed by the treasurer, there is a mechanism in the municipal code that would allow for those duties and responsibilities to be discharged by the city manager. It takes city council action to direct the city manager to act in that capacity, but he would have the authority under state law to do so if you so elected, to keep that treasurer position vacant and have those duties and responsibilities handled by the city manager.
Hey, Alderman Winger?
Thank you. So, Mr. Wilson, it is the question, should we start working on roles and responsibilities? Is that the real question here?
I mean, that was gonna be part of what, uh, manager Murmus and I were gonna bring back to you...
Okay.
...anyways, but I know there'd been some consternation whether or not to eliminate it as an elected position or not.
Mm-hmm.
And so the fact that she's going to be leaving town just adds another layer to that conversation, so.
So I believe either way, we have to do the work on it, so I'd like to see the work be done.
Correct, just, just kinda mentioning the, the added layer, layer in there, so.
Okay. Go ahead.
I have one other thing, um, more informational, um, and I can put something in the packet as well tomorrow. Um, at the DMMC, um, event yesterday, um, I spoke with our Comcast representative, and they have a program now for, I think they had it last year as well, um, for families on free and reduced lunch, where they give them, uh, a low discounted price on internet for their homes and a few other things. Um, so they're gonna reach out to us to get us some materials on that. Um, also, then we can reach out to the school to make sure they're available of that, to, to try and help out some of the, the families on the free or reduced lunches, uh, here in town, so.
Okay. Thank you. Um, one more thing. I would like to, uh, I don't know if anyone got noticed or not yet, but the Forest Preserve, I, I let Mr. Kramer add down to this about the easement on, um, Addison Road, about waiving the fees and stuff. I don't wanna say anything wr- wrong on that, so. Or I'll turn it over, let Mr. Bond take it, he was at the meeting, so.
All right, Mr. Bond?
Yeah, the, uh, Mr. Kramer did attend the planning session. He presented the position of the city. If you recall, the, uh, we're doing improvements to the water main on Addison Road in connection with that project. There'd been originally, the Forest Preserve District indicated that there was going to be a substantial charge in excess of seventy-five thousand dollars for that easement. Uh, the concern was that the fact that we are another public entity, we have traditionally waived fees when they've applied, they've requested it, uh, through the efforts of Mr. Kramer and, uh, positioning himself with, before the planning session. I did work with representatives of the Forest Preserve. Uh, I know that there was a, uh, an alderman who was very instrumental in getting that to be waived. What the, uh, Forest Preserve did is we reduced the size of the easement, uh, which is still within the, it's a twelve-and-a-half-foot easement now, uh, still allows us a twenty-five-foot construction easement for the construction of that water main. Uh, what that did then is the only obligation on behalf of the city is for the city to, uh, maintain the turf, uh, along that, uh, along that easement. So, uh, that was a, a really phenomenal outcome, given the fact that there was gonna be a significant cost to that. So that will be, uh, on the agenda for your approval of the easement agreement at the next city council meeting, but, uh, that was a, a great deal of effort, again, on behalf of, uh, Mr. Kramer, as well as, uh, one of the aldermen for the city was, uh, very helpful in making sure that the Forest Preserve was, uh, willing to waive that fee. I had something to do with it as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. Only one more question, Alderman Winger.
Thank you. So, Mr. Kramer, in, in a side conversation, you and I had, uh, discussion of that tract of land, and being so small as it is, maybe this is the best time to do it, that what it does is it, it takes a sidewalk, then there's grass, and then the bike path. There's like this just blank patch of land, is this the time to now connect the two, and can that be in the agreement?
Go ahead.
We did work diligently at trying to get that sidewalk from just south of Charmeille connected with the existing Greenway Bike Trail. We were not able to formally finish that. Due to the alignment of the water main, the proximity of Salt Creek to the edge of Addison Road, the impact within the actual stormwater, um, because that falls within the stormwater spillway through there, we're not able to put that sidewalk along Addison Road safely at this time.
Okay.
So we did not incorporate as part of that. We did diligently work with that, with both the Forest Preserve, Baxter and Woodman designing it, since it is within the floodplain, and DuPage County, at this time, we weren't able to do it. We haven't given up on it yet. We didn't wanna hold back the water main project...
Right.
...just for the installation of the sidewalk, so we haven't completely lost hope on it. We do have the easement in place, if we, if we ultimately can get past the hurdle of putting a sidewalk in the floodplain and actually excavating, the, the, the real crux of the issue is the proximity of the road to the proposed sidewalk in relationship to Salt Creek and the bridge and the underpass that's fall, that falls underneath there for Salt Creek. So that's the issue.
Okay. Thank you, but I appreciate you confronting the issue and trying.
Now you sound like attorney. Uh, motion for adjournment?
So, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Call, call the public works meeting order.
Five minutes?
Make the minute takers, same people are present. I need a motion to approve the minutes, January, uh, June fourteenth, two thousand and twelve. That will be my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Correction, changes? All in favor? Aye. Motion opposed? Motion carries. Report and recommendation, uh, work order to Baxter and Woodman not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars for the Royal Oak subdivision primary, uh, primary design engineer. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Opposed. I wanna oppose. Motion carries. Number five, report and recommendation contract awards to ALAM Contra- Contract, and, uh, not to exceed two-hundred-ninety-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and, uh, four cents for the Addison war, uh, Addison Road Water Main Phase Two Construction. That is my motion.
Second.
Question. Alderman Coles?
Uh, which? ALAM. That is the guy that put the sidewalks in?
Uh, Mr. Kramer? ALAM was a contractor that did the actual first phase of the Addison Road Water Main along Addison Road last year. They've done numerous projects throughout the city over the last four years that I've been here. They're a road builder, underground company, they do concrete as well.
I got a question. Who did the sidewalks on Montclair Lane?
I do not know who RW Dunhaman's sub was for Montclair Lane.
Because they're all blowing up, you know? They got two spots there that are like this. A lot of people use them sidewalks, especially for some baby characters. All right?
Okay. Mr. Kramer? I am aware of both sidewalks that heaved on the north and south end. That was due to thermal expansion. Um, that work was...
I realize that.
That work was done well past the three-year guarantee for Montclair. I can find out who that was. Unfortunately...
It doesn't matter, because we're gonna have to replace many ways of the safety issues.
We've already secured a contract to take care of it, so it will be replaced this, next week.
It's gonna be taken care of. Pretty quick, okay.
Okay. Any other?
No.
I have, I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Con- reported, uh, recommended contract awards to RJN Group Incorporated not to exceed an amount forty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-forty dollars and those cents for Addison Wa- Water Main Phase Two Construction, Sultan Service.
Second.
I have a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Um, report and recommendation pay request, partial maximum construction corporation for the north water wastewater treatment plant upgrade Phase One A, not to exceed an amount of two-hundred-and-eighty, eighty thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and forty-five cents. That is my motion.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Report and recommend pay request number two, partial two thou- two thousand and three water main replacement, uh, project MQ construction not to exceed three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-eight thousand, sixty-nine cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. The only thing I would add to that...
Is that right?
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Coles?
MQ. Are they done with Central? Uh, our, and, uh, sunny side?
Mr., um...
Kramer? The short answer on that, no, they're not done with any of the water mains yet. We've still got one valve replacement on Charmeille left to go. Uh, Sunny Side still has some crossings and a valve to be completed. We did do, uh, the services. Uh, Central Avenue has yet to have the full services put on it, and we have yet to do services on...
There's one spot that they haven't even, they still got open, uh, gravel yet, that ain't even trained out yet.
Correct.
All right.
This ain't, Joe, this ain't the final, this is a partial.
All right.
So.
Give them their money.
Okay, so, was motion, there was second, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? No one opposed? Item number nine, report, item number nine, reporting recommendation pay request number two for Wooddale Or- Orman Streetlight Project, Al- Alman Nelson not to exceed two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and forty-five cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
I have a question.
I can get a second on the floor first. Do I have a second?
Somebody second?
Still on second?
Second.
Question?
Question.
Go ahead.
Um, John, we, um, we have a, a resident that is complaining about a crack, that he believes that, um, uh, the, the company that installed the lights did. Have we come up with any kind of, uh, uh, solution for this resident yet?
Mr. Kramer? Yes, um, we actually have, uh, a, a photograph of the driveway prior to the work being done, indicating the crack was already present. I emailed the resident, have met with the resident, and talked to him on the phone, have told him that we would be more than happy, as part of the punch list, to fill the crack. To date, on two emails, I have yet to receive any response back if he would like that done. Um, again, we contend that the crack was already present, so obviously, the contractor would not be responsible for replacing the driveway apron, so we have made contact with that resident. To date, we have not received any information back.
Frank?
Um, John, I, I think I know what crack you're talking about. Did you see the second crack, I guess, that the one that's further up towards the home? Uh, 'cause I brought in pictures of where you can actually see the tracks of the equipment that they used that goes right over that piece. Are we referring to the other, smaller crack that's closer to the road?
Go ahead, Mr. Kramer. The only crack that I'm aware of is the one that we photographed at the corner of the driveway, which would be the north corner of that driveway.
So, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Uh, item ten, report and recommendation pay request, partial payment metro parking lot improvement, uh, project RW Dunhaman not to exceed an amount of two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and ninety cents. That is my motion. I have a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Well, opposed? Item for, consider future meetings. The only item that I would ask, oh, Mike, go ahead.
I'd like to have the, uh, city manager request, the town meeting with the ComEd representative, at a date that would be decided.
Okay. So we're going to talk about ComEd? Mr. Mayor, care to take that?
Talking about outages in this town that are regurgitating.
But, you have a question?
I just have two comments.
Okay, go ahead. So we'll put that on the line. Okay.
I would just like to formally thank all the residents for the patience that they had during the metric instruction. I know that it was, uh, a busy time, um, while we reconstructed that lot. I think the final product was excellent. I'd like to thank, uh, RW Dunhaman and, and Baxter and Woodman as well. Uh, I thought the project was very successful. We're completing the lights this week, but the bulk of the, um, inconvenience to all the residents that park in the metro lot, uh, is over for right now, but I, I, I do appreciate everyone's cooperation during the project. Thank you, it's all ahead.
Alderman Roy Wesley? Um, John, would you send, on behalf of myself, I'm gonna speak on behalf of myself, uh, your staff did an excellent job on the storm. You guys were right on top of it, and, uh, would you send thank you to you, you and your staff for, uh, doing an excellent job on getting out there and taking those trees down where, in the parkways?
Absolutely, thank you. I will pass that along to staff.
Mr. Pat Bond?
I just wanted to, uh, take the opportunity, I do have Scott Hidalah from our office, he's an associate with Von Dixon and Associates. Uh, you may see his name on memos and, uh, correspondence, so I just thought he wanted to come and see the, uh, discussion on the video gaming. He participated in a lot of the research on that. You are not being charged for two of us being here this evening, uh, just for the record, but I did wanna introduce, uh, Mr. Hidalah to you. He's a gentleman in the dark suit and the red tie, so.
So if we can't get ahold of you, we call him?